We do, all right. I'd like to ask that you rise for the invocation and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask your blessing as we meet together. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, and abiding presence as we discuss and deliberate the important issues before us. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our neighbors, to keep Sunnyside a safe and growing community. Help us to always remember we are all your children and beneficiaries of your grace and mercy, made possible only by the death and resurrection of your Son. Give us willing servant hearts to accomplish your will. We ask this in the name of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Let your allegiance be the flag of the United States of America and to the repulsive witness's hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, first item on the agenda is public comments. Note, citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Council may refer these items to staff to review and/or research for presentation at a future council meeting. Also, it is not customary for council members to comment right away on public comments. All right, first name on my list is Teresa Hancock. Please approach the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and then make your comments.
Teresa Hancock, City of Sunnyside. I would like to suspend the rules again. We've got interpretation going on. It's gonna be a little lengthy in the interpretation, so I would like to ask for the five minutes.
Council, what is your feeling on five minutes?
I think we need it tonight.
Okay, is there any objection to suspending the rules?
No objection.
Seeing none, okay, we will extend to five minutes. I ask though that everybody please stick to the five minutes, so we have a lot of people that want to talk this evening. Thank you.
Yes, and I, first of all, I want to say welcome, Mr. Gonzalez. I'm glad you're here. I think your day's been challenging, but I think you're gonna be a good news harbinger for the City of Sunnyside. I welcome you, and if there's any way I can help you, I would be more than willing to. I spent thirteen years on council and achieved an advanced certificate of municipal leadership, took available trainings on all facets of the responsibilities of an elected body. My number one lesson for budget was never use one-time monies for ongoing expenses. Well, it has happened, and this is gonna be a very difficult time for the City of Sunnyside, for all of you council members, especially your new council members. You took the brave step of curing, obviously, we had a problem, and you cured it. Thank you very much. If that's a hard thing to do, the second hardest thing to do is going to be making this budget make sense. And you're gonna have to look these employees in the eyes. I, you know, I can't think that we can just increase our fees to make up three million dollars. So you've got a hard job in front of you. I wish you all the best getting it done, so it's gonna be hard for the citizens, the customers, especially low-income, fixed-income, and families. They're gonna have a hard time with this.
We come before you tonight to ask your blessing as we meet.
All right, not quite sure what's going on there. Please excuse this.
To keep Sunnyside a safe and growing community. Help us to always remember we are all your children and beneficiaries of your grace and mercy.
Do you have it on YouTube also?
Made possible only by the death and resurrection of your Son.
Let's try to get, okay.
We could always use more prayer.
Amen.
All right, sorry, Teresa, carry on.
I appreciate your courtesy tonight of allowing us to speak a little bit longer. I was very disappointed in disbelief when I heard the citizens who have worked very hard on trying to get information to council and former staff with concerns on the budget to be told by a council member that they didn't want to hear from for five minutes instead of three. Nine, there were nine citizens who wanted to speak, and at two minutes each, that's eighteen minutes out of your council time, eighteen minutes. And it's hard for people to come down here and talk before council. And I thought it was very unprofessional that this council, this citizen's profession was brought up. And I just think it's hard for citizens to approach council, and that they should be treated with respect. My next question is in regards to the fireworks of July 2nd through 6th, 6:00 PM to 11:59. I was looking up the ordinance. I saw that there was something about storage and distribution, and perhaps somewhere I read, and I couldn't find it again when I went to look for it, was a mention of a building being built to house fireworks, and I didn't know if that was part of it, wasn't part of it. Reading the ordinance, you know, I had been told that the ordinance can't be repealed, and I don't know what the law is, but A, was there a financial consideration made to somebody to build a warehouse, or is that, am I misunderstanding it? Where do the twenty-dollar permit fees go? And I'm sorry I didn't miss it. I've been taking care of my father for these last few years and haven't been to council meetings, but in reading the ordinance, it says that the fire department can alter and can change what is done as far as fireworks are concerned for displays or for home displays. And so if the fire department can change it, you know, what is the RCW? I would like to just have that and read it, because I think that there's there's gotta be some way to remedy this, because it just went on too long. Then listening tonight to your presentation about the Catholic charities. I was on planning commission when we authorized the Crystal Ray, and I really like that facility. I think it's a good thing. I think it was good for Sunnyside. I just, I know this has gone before planning commission, but I'm worried about the impacts of development on Schoon Road. That is already congested. From Schoon to Outlook, the outlet road, that whole corner there, sure going across Yakima Valley Highway, that's lined up for a long time. You take five hundred units, three cars per unit, we're talking fifteen hundred cars. You guys better have your, you know, I is dotted and your T is crossed for that. I'm worried about the water and sewer too, and that's, that all can be brought up, but but you know what, once that's built, then is it gonna be on us if the impacts of the traffic is too great? And then there's always the tax implications, and is my understanding this is actually an outlook, not in Sunnyside?
What's on Sunnyside?
It's in Sunnyside. Well, they said Outlook, so yeah, so it's annexed. There, you won't get the property taxes so much from it. So that's, that's one consideration. It's great for the citizens, so I'm not opposed to it. Okay.
Thank you, and we'll try to get answers to your questions.
Thank you.
Next name on my list is Tom Dolan.
My name is Tom Dolan. I live in Sunnyside. I wanted to clear up misconception yesterday. Those weren't all my questions. I had a little bit of input, and those three women I work with had the rest of them, so I just wanted to clear that up. And I disagree with Teresa. I don't have any problem talking to council. Not hard for me. It cuts down my time a little having her go first, because I was gonna ask for the suspension, but I stood up here with a whiteboard at one point and showed you about twenty-six, actually, I think I stopped at twenty-three, vacated positions and people that had either left or been fired, but vacated their position because they felt they couldn't work here without compromising their values. And I talked to them personally a few times, many of them, and I was sad to hear what they had to say. I would like to see an apology sent to all of them. Their files pulled, their names restored. And I feel this is the very least we could do for for them. I would ask that my council direct our city manager to initiate this long overdue process, because these people sorry, teachers don't do it like this. These people deserve this. In the first three days, I had staff reaching out to me. This is what our new city manager said on Saturday about some of the many issues he talked about. First three days. It's been nineteen days later, and it's still, that's all it took for Mike Gonzalez to earn the trust of staff to talk with him. I believe that says a lot about his leadership and integrity as a person, and how much staff are wanting to be heard and do have a leader they can trust. City manager for his leadership action to, I wanted to commend the city manager for his leadership action to stop the bleeding that has been taking place at our city hall. It's like watching a really good series. Can't wait for the next episode.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Next on my list is Monica Niemeyer.
Good evening, council, city manager, departments, and the public. It's great to have a strong show. So, well, here we are. Here we all are. We're still standing, and we're still here together. And that gives me hope that we're gonna be able to move forward and move forward successfully. I know we have a long road ahead of us, and I'm glad we now have solutions, and solutions that are actually being discussed openly with the public being granted time to comment, additional time to comment, to be heard and considered. So what I would like to talk about in regards to the solution, that maybe we should also add a little bit of time to discussing the commitment. The commitment from the city manager, the council, city staff, and the public. We're all gonna be in this together. This is not the first time our city has been in this situation, and we've never taken a lesson learned from it. This is not something we should be proud of, and it should not be used as a justification of why we can get through it, because we've been there before. It should not work that way. So I suggest that while we're working on a solution for our budget, that we work on an action to prevent it any further. Because quite honestly, one time should be enough. We need to have our lessons learned. So how are we going to achieve that? I believe the first thing we need to do is acknowledge that this happened, all of us in our own way. You cannot give transparency without honesty. And you cannot have honesty without first yourself being accountable. We need to enlarge this on all of us. After we give ourselves the accountability, the honesty, and the transparency, then we can move on to the next step that's needed. And that's learning what we need to do. We need to educate ourselves. Also, we need you to serve the seat in the way that it deserves, that we deserve and that you deserve, being an individual sitting in that chair. You need to educate yourself and stay educated. If you choose to vote on items you do not understand, that is actually no one's fault but yours. We cannot help you with what you don't want to learn. That is not our job as the public. We vote you in these positions with the expectation that you want to learn how to best serve our community, your community. Council members, you have so much support. I actually envy you. That you really should not be failing when you're building to carry the knowledge that so you can serve. If you're not gaining the knowledge, that is your choice to not want to. We need you to blame. Tom Dolan, Sharon Dolan, Britten Moore, myself, do not have the luxury of the resources you have. We do not have anything to help us. We do not have an organization such as the MRC to guide us in our questions and bring us in the direction of additional resources and training. Fellow council members that we can reach out to for their perspective on issues facing the community and city. We do not have those luxuries to let be decided to understand more. We educated ourselves. We talked to the Department of Labor, the Secretary of State, the Judicial Legislative, forgot what it stood for, Julia Hart, Justice Auditor's Office, learning to follow the RCWs, understanding LTAC, public records requests. We actually learned how to figure out a city budget, find errors. We taught ourselves this in just sixteen months. But there's some of you that have been holding on to these positions in this church for years. So put it that way. Educate yourself. And for the public and city staff, you understand your power. You're still, you could ask questions. There are not, there have been questions, meaningless dumb answers have never been one question. We've just had people that would be able to split them. My confidence is kind of environmental subject to this city and Sunnyside locally. We wish success and growth for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Niemeyer. Next name is Sharon Dolan.
Hello. My name is Sharon Dolan. I am a resident of Sunnyside. I was unable to attend the August 24th meeting. However, I listened on my way to Seattle. I believe a comment made by councilperson Julia Hart was very unprofessional. Ms. Hart directed her objection to lengthening public comment directly to my husband. You are a teacher. You should know how to do this. The stack of papers she then referenced were for council and city manager. These pages contain a partial list of questions we have asked for the last year and a half. As a group, we learned how to look up and navigate state and federal sites searching for answers to our questions and concerns. Council, it is your responsibility to investigate and educate yourselves on city government and proper policy and procedure. You will then be able to answer hard questions. Our city is in trouble, and I am not sure if some on council understand the extent of the trouble. In March, citizens were invited by the finance director to a public meeting presented by the State Auditor's Office. Discussion was 2021-2022 audit findings. As we know, the city received a good report. However, the auditor stressed it was just a snapshot and not the full picture. Some on council took much pleasure in this and appeared very smug, appearing happy that our group was wrong. We were not wrong. We waited. Welcome Fit Report 2023. It is ironic that some members of council were happy about the state auditor's report when they knew the financials for 2023 were going to be so bad. We were repeatedly told by council to go to the finance director about our questions and concerns. We never did. We believed we would not have received accurate information. During the August 24th meeting, the financial administrator said that she was following instructions given by the former city manager with council approval. She also said supervisors lost access to their budget report in May because of software update. Some supervisors have not had access to their reports for over a year. Lying by omission is when we withhold or fail to disclose important details that could affect someone's decision-making process. This type of deception can be just as harmful as telling an outright lie, because it can lead people down the wrong path. When Mr. Zabel spoke up trying to clarify the numbers that were up on that screen and the extent of the, I don't think some council members realize the extent of the deficits. We are four to five million dollars in the red. Blaming budget issues on shooting at 2021 Cinco de Mayo is shifting responsibility. Mayor, when you said the intention was to discuss budget issues in April, then shooting happened in May, or, excuse me, issues in April, the shooting happened in May. Things got crazy, and it was kicked down the road. No, you kicked the citizens and the welfare of our community down the road, neglecting the hard conversations. Proverbs 3:27, "Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due, when it is in your power to act." I am angry because we were not listened to. I am angry because we were right. I am not happy we were right. Folks and families will suffer. I am angry because some on council appear to be making excuses for what has proven to be incompetence and mismanagement. We must stop making excuses and work to get our city back on track. I believe under our new city manager, we will find the way out of this mess. Respectfully, Sharon Dolan.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolan. Next person is Britten Moore.
Good evening, everyone. Britten Moore. I'm a citizen here of Sunnyside. I have a few questions about the Monson Property. I'd first like to thank you all for being here, all the department heads, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate you and your leadership, setting a new tone for city hall. The questions I have, I feel very confident that I'll receive answers down the road, if not today, tomorrow, but next week, when you get things worked out. On Saturday, the Monson Property transaction was discussed, and I looked up some information, Resolution 2023-19, and I have a few questions. There was forty-eight thousand dollars in earnest money paid on April 6th in 2023 as the promissory note shows. If it wasn't paid on that day, what day was it paid on, and was it the full amount? Which fund receives that credit? I'm not a real estate agent, but escrow accounts usually can't be touched. They have to be their own account. And I don't see anything on the financial program of an escrow account. It's also a five percent payment. Generally, they're ten percent. I don't know if that was a decision made or decided at some point and when. When was this escrow account set up, and where is it? It could be somewhere, but we're just not seeing it on the financials. That's on page nineteen of the Buyer's Brokerage Firm's Compensation Addendum. I have the escrow contract here. Lastly, I see that the agreement that looks like the filing of the sale, but it wasn't. There's a contract as well between both parties that will show. Is the city holding the note, or is Monson Vetter Development LLC getting a loan to pay the city? And what was that agreement? Is the city holding the note? What are the terms of those payments? When was the first payment to be made? How long does Monson Vetter Development LLC have to pay? When is their cutoff? And what do we have in place to ensure the sale will happen as agreed, too, and how long will it take? What is in place to protect the city if it does not go through? So those are some questions that could be easily answered. I'm not sure, but this is all I was able to find, so I thank you for your time, and Mr. Bula, I appreciate you suspending the time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, and we will try to get answers to your questions as soon as we can. Correct? Yes, all right. Next name on my list is Janet Aguirre.
Good evening. Before I start, I just want to say I am very happy that our interpretation services are finally up and going. I think it was very much needed for our community, so thank you. My name is Janet Aguirre, and I'm a resident of Sunnyside. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the hiring of a recreation coordinator. It was my understanding that this position was needed due to limitations in the recreation supervisor's contract. However, after conducting research through a formal records request, the information I gathered clearly shows that the contract is not the issue and should not be used as an excuse to bring on additional staff. From my request, I have found out that the work hours of the recreation supervisor are specifically set for the community center as per the Mendocable Code 2.03.010. In 2022, these hours were changed to 10:00 AM to noon and noon to four. These hours do not seem conducive to community needs, especially for working individuals. Additionally, I am concerned about how these hours support our youth, given that they only provide six hours of open business time. Most of that time they're in school. Regarding the contract, I believe that the recreation supervisor's position falls under the union contract for division supervisors, not under an individual contract. According to Collective Bargaining Agreement, Article 5.2, a regular full-time employee is expected to work forty hours per week. The recreation supervisor is also subject to a standard workday defined in Article 14.1.1 as five consecutive eight-hour days followed by two days off. Given these facts, it's clear that the current contract allows for a full workday. The limited operating hours that the community center do not reflect the full work schedule outlined by the contract. Instead of hiring additional staff, a straightforward solution could involve making alterations to the hours of operations and staggering the start times of the existing staff members. This adjustment could extend the center's operating hours to better serve the community without incurring extra costs. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Finished my notes here. All right, the next name on my list is Sandra Sessadi. Yes.
Send my phone, sorry.
Thank you.
Sandra Sessadi, resident of Sunnyside. One of the concerns I do have is regarding the construction that's going on on 16th Street by the schools. I'm sure that it's probably due to just getting the funding already for the construction, but it starts school tomorrow, and that's very concerning that some of our, a majority of our students walk to school. So that means they're gonna be walking around, you know, on the street, having to walk on the street because of, you know, the construction, so I just wondered, do you look at the schedules? I know it's hard to look at school schedules and city schedules, but what can we do to move forward so our kids are not out there, you know, in danger with a lot of traffic that's gonna be happening the first couple of days? So Chief Lemon, I know you've been doing a great job of recruiting, so I don't know if maybe we can have extra patrol officers out there on 16th because of the construction sites and our students walking to school? Just, just a question. And also, the situation of the four million dollar deficit. On February 12th, 2024, I know that the city manager got removed from her position. Some council members were giving backlash to the council members that made that decision. And one of them said, you're shooting yourself in the foot for that decision. So my question now is, do you still think that, after knowing the situation, are you still in the thought of shooting in the foot for making that decision? And accolades were given to the city manager that she had gotten high rates of, you know, just things that she had done in the Monson, the selling of the Monson land. So basically, they had one dollar So basically, they had one dollar, but we were spending two dollars. Um, so I know one of the council members said that they didn't trust the financial situation that we were in, right? So I'm really with this question. Do we trust, knowing that these conversations were happening to them? And I just thought at the time, the city manager, since January, do we trust the position that the mayor has right now? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sessadi. We will try to get answers to your questions. Next name on my list is Maria Fernandez.
Maria Fernandez with E adelante. So I got to watch the, uh, the retreat on YouTube proceedings on Saturday, and I was actually really relieved that Mayor Dean Burisma actually admitted his responsibility in this farce of, um, a situation with the previous city manager. Um, and so he's pretty much in the hot seat, and he's admitting to that right now. And I'm sure that he'd be willing to hold himself accountable, and everybody else should be holding himself accountable. But I think that the other person that really needs, it really needs to be brought to light is the position that even Councilor Julia Hart has taken. Um, and her objections to, and her constant objective objections and patronization of other city council members who are trying to do the work of change. And so just so people are aware, just so you all know.
Enough that this, this is just a shoot yourself in the foot situation to remove the city manager who has brought nothing but accolades to the community. If without her, we wouldn't have been able to get rid of the Monson property, without her calling that surplus, without, without her here rebuilding from scratch the Parks and Recreation Program, from scratch, being able to get a department, police department that is in unity and is, and is working as a functioning unit. The same with the fire department, getting the fire department to work in a unit and having the, having the foresight to say, we needed to have somebody as a community development director that takes on all of those things that fall into that particular category. This is vision, visionary. It doesn't suit everybody because nobody likes change. But I gotta tell you.
Okay, I want to go ahead and go almost line by line in what Councilor Hart was saying when she was objecting to the termination of Alba as a city manager. And I want to remind everybody that Councilor Hart has been in her seat since, what, two thousand fifteen? So basically, Alba was under her tutelage, that council's tutelage, um, when she was the finance director in two thousand sixteen and became the city manager twenty-one, twenty-two, right? And, and getting all the visitor. I also want to remind everybody that last year when they had a council meeting and, uh, Restucci was very vocal in saying with Farmer, Council Farmer, that they should be listening to their city manager without question. If she wants an events manager or the, the events coordinator, they should be right behind her, falling in line, saying, yes, you do what you want to do. That has been the problem. Everybody was falling in line with Alba and not questioning. Essentially, there was zero oversight over what that city manager was doing. And let's talk about what Julia Hart said in terms of getting rid of the Monson property. That did not happen. And so this ghost number, this fake number comes into your budget and completely screws everything up. And now that you're, now you're in the hole for a million dollars. Talked about, um, the police department hiring, um, officers with ARPA funds, which is really not even allowed to happen, where you hired four new officers. And Mayor, you used the community as an excuse in the shooting in order to justify, um, using temporary funds for permanent positions, which again is, is placing you in the hole even further. And again, when, if you know us and the kind of work that we do, we're tired of the community being blamed for bad decision-making on the part of public leaders. That has to change. So you, you all have to understand that you cannot law and order your way out of issues that have a root cause associated with poverty, okay? And that should be looked at much further, uh, to address the root causes of crime, violence, and gangs. The other thing that you mentioned, that Councilor Hart, was a community development director. You're crazy, and there were accolades thrown there. You're talking about a director who was now gone and was completely out of touch with his community, completely unaligned with his community, completely detached from this community, so much so that he was, he was being courted by developers for a contract, and nobody knows what the hell that is, when the community has been screaming for soccer fields. That person is gone. You talk about a visionary, uh, previous city manage, manager. I'm sure that you didn't envision a four million dollar deficit because of your previous city manager. And then you, you also have the goal to talk about, nobody likes change. Well, I'm going to say here that I don't think it's, you like change, because it is conduct business as usual with zero oversight of your manager, which this new coun-, this new council, it should be oversight. So the change really needs to happen, continue to happen on that trajectory with this council. And if you all had any integrity, you'd step down.
All right. No applause, please. All right, thank you. The next name on my list is Jim Stevens.
Uh, Jim Stevens, residence, uh, Sunnyside. Uh, the last speaker, I didn't hear where, where her residence was from. Um, I think we're supposed to give that. Um, I, um, recently, there was a change of, uh, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. I used to this. Uh, you're doing a good job, by the way. I don't understand any of it, but it's a good job.
There you are, Dr. Stevens.
Um, which also, you know, we, we talked about getting an AI service to do translation, because obviously there's a need for that. And I think that, uh, it might help out a lot. She's doing a great job, though. Uh, but recently, there was a change of staffing in a couple of positions. I want to commend whoever is, uh, the director or directors of that. I think you did a great job in that regard. Um, we've had issues that have gone on in the community. It's mentioned was cause of, cause of crime and, uh, gang activity, et cetera. Uh, I, I think the broken window theory, and I've brought this up before, and I don't mean this to be sounding like a broken record, but, uh, starting with things like, uh, one of our members of the council some time ago said, "You'll stop crying, uh, uh, if you stop it at the lowest level, or it's going to be a jaywalking or drive-by shooting." So we all laughed at it, and he was absolutely right. Uh, parking, parking right wheel to the curb, uh, noise ordinances, respecting, it's all about respect. Respecting your neighbors, respecting the law, respecting our officers. And we need to give as much support as we can to officers, because they're, they're, uh, I don't like the word, but they're handcuffed from Olympia. You can say something. And so, uh, we, we need to support them as much as we can. As a community, we need to support. My watch group strongly supports what they're doing and want to make every effort, every effort we can uh, to support them and their efforts. I think the chief's doing a great job, uh, so far. Uh, uh, Mike, I'm really impressed with the job that you're doing. And, uh, it's great that the council is supporting him. I think that's, it's well placed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is, uh, Ruby Medina.
Good evening, city manager, council. I'm going to defer my time to Maria.
Ms. Fernandez, did you have more to say?
So, yeah, um, five minutes goes by really fast, especially when you get to use somebody else's words um, to, to play back to the audience so that they could be reminded of the kind of leadership that continues to exist here and that needs to change here on the council. What I really wanted to also bring up, um, isn't in regards to, um, the failed accounting of the city and the failed lack of oversight, um, with the city council, the previous city council. But I also wanted to, to talk about the proclamation that you all have on the agenda to, tonight. I'm utterly disappointed with the fact that the previous, um, resolution, actually, actually, the, the last, it was the last city council meeting that was rejected by the city council, even though it had been reviewed, analyzed for any legal liabilities by your own city attorney. That speaks volumes to the city's council, lack of trust in their own city attorney, um, to decide what is liable for the city council. It had a, it had a green light, and instead, this council chose to cower um, and use an all-minds-matter approach to a very specific problem. We understand that all labor is important, just like all lives matter. But in this instance, we're talking about the labor of farm workers. We're talking about a significant percentage and portion of your community that is reflected in ag industry by farm workers. We're talking about conditions that they have to deal with today. You mentioned the Safeway workers. If you go to Safeway, you, you know they're unionized, right? They're not. They're not calling you because they have a union. The people who called you was UFW farm workers who are calling for their city to support them in egregious acts committed by one specific company here. And even if you could not make mention of that one specific company for libelous reasons, the very least, what you could have done is say that as a council, you support the farmers' unionizing efforts, um, here in Sunnyside. Because you all, and, and I so appreciate the work that Councilor Fausto has put before you, because it is the watered-down version that you all will accept. And, and that's, if that's the, the steps that have to be taken, the baby steps, before you actually get to see real change in the next coming years on this council, then, then the baby steps will happen. But I promise you, at some point, there will be a council here that absolutely represents the interests of its workers here in very specific situations, because that's what they deserve. They work their asses off and with very little pay, pay with very harsh working conditions, under the threat of termination, under the threat of the dangerous working conditions when they do speak up. It was absolutely uncalled for for the city council to not support these specific workers. We know there's some history and an agreement with Greenwood Farms that those are the conditions that continue to exist there. It's kind of like saying that a sexual assault victim cannot be believed. You're saying that your workers cannot be believed here. So I would hope that you all eventually revisit the, the topic of supporting your local farm workers, because Safeway workers are not calling you. It is your local farm workers who are calling you for protections and for, for some supports. That's what, what I wanted my last comment to be.
Please, no applause, please. All right, the last name on my list, and this one's coming via Zoom, and that would be Chelsea Demas, Ms. Demas. Are you there, Ms. Demas?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm having some connectivity issues. Um, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, perfect.
You may, you may begin.
Muted. Oh. I'm right here. Okay, sorry about that. Um, hi, everybody. My name is Chelsea Demas. Um, I am a resident of Sunnyside, Washington. Um, I am here speaking on, um, in my Human Rights Commissioner capacity. Um, the reason why I chose to leave a public comment today um, is because of the resolution that is on today's agenda. Um, you know, I was invited a few weeks back, um, to hear stories of local farm workers right here in our backyard. Um, a lot of them sharing some atrocious stories about the treatment and exploitation that they were facing. And this is happening right underneath our noses. And, you know, they called for help. They asked for our city to stand in unity with them. They asked for the state to stand in unity with them. And it's really disappointing to know that a watered-down version of the original proclamation is being considered tonight instead of the one that is blatantly calling out exploitation and ask, and asking uh, for a stance and solidarity with our workers. I, you know, I am deeply disappointed by that, as, as a few other folks before mentioned. And I just want to let community know that the Human Rights Commission for the state will be passing a resolution, um, later this month or in September, standing in solidarity with our farm workers and calling out the fact that they have been exploited, they have been abused, they have been mistreated. Because in our state, we do not stand, um, for people's human rights to be stripped, to be taken away. We protect them. And so, um, once I have that information about what meeting that's going to be, I will share it with community, so y'all could be there and be present and stand in solidarity with our farm workers. And I hope that moving forward, our council, especially those who voted against it, will rethink it and do their job as servant leaders and stand up for what's right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Demas. All right, and that brings us to the end of the public comment signup sheet. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Thank you for being here. Uh, it's not always things that we, as council members, enjoy hearing, but, uh, they are important things for us to hear. So again, thank you very much. We'll continue on with our agenda. If some of you need to leave after the comment period, um, please, always, you are welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but if you need to leave, you may, you may go now. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following. The minutes, approve the minutes of the July one, two thousand twenty-four special meeting. Approve the minutes of the July eight, two thousand twenty-four special meeting. Approve the minutes of the July nine, two thousand twenty-four special meeting. Approve the minutes of the July sixteen, two thousand twenty-four special meeting. Payroll vouchers, approve payroll vouchers, numbers one one nine five nine zero through one one nine six zero seven. And wire transfers as listed for six hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, sixty-nine, six, oh, let me start that again. Six hundred eighty-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents for the period ending on August nine, two thousand twenty-four. Yeah, it's difficult to, uh, listen and interpret at the same time. It's, it is actually painful. I have done that before. All right, claim vouchers. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero nine nine six one through one one zero 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 five and wire transfers as listed for one hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents for the period ending on July nineteen, two thousand twenty-four. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero nine eight five four through one zero nine nine zero five and wire transfers as listed for one hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents for the period ending on August nine, two thousand twenty-four. And finally, approve claim voucher numbers one one zero 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 six through one one zero seven one and wire transfers as listed for four hundred thousand, six hundred fifty-seven. I'll start that one again, four hundred and six thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents for the period ending on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. It is. It says August sixteenth on here.
I guess.
Okay, no, you're fine. And, um, in, uh, on, for the benefit of our interpreter, she is doing the best that she can. All right. Por favor, no. No, no applause, please. All right, council members, is there any item that you wish to pull from the consent agenda for discussion? Mr. Dolan?
I had a, a couple items, but I, I never received a respond, a response from, uh, Ms. Jamison last week. So I don't know, do we have somebody here that, uh?
Um, Mr. Manager, what, uh, what would you like to have done with that?
Uh, no, the reality is, uh, I, I let her go this morning, so, um, and I'm working on processes to have the number two sort of step up. Uh, that's a conversation I'll have tomorrow with that individual. So, I mean, the focus right now is really finding an executive-level person that can step into that role. So, uh, those conversations are starting with GMP, uh, the Rec. Uh, the recruiting agency, then I've already talked to Lucia about some of the processes, so. Uh, you know, Deputy Mayor, in terms of that question that I saw you had asked, I'd. Obviously, I don't think it's going to get answered in the short run, but. Uh, if you can, if you can resend that to me, and uh, I'll put that on my priority list tomorrow and see. If we can't get that answered for you ASAP, but um, in the meantime, um, we're, we're definitely looking for somebody.
Good to do that. All right, thank you, sir. All right. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the minutes, uh, the consent agenda.
Die second.
All right, we've got a motion by councillor Hart, second by councillor Vasquez to approve the consent agenda as presented. Please council, remember that if there are questions, you may email them to the manager and he will. See what he can do to find the answers for that, whether he sends that to the finance department or looks for him himself, so. All right, is there any debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. By two vote aye, motion passes. All right, council, I've uh, asked earlier if, is there any objection to rearranging the agenda so that item A and item B are switched?
No objection.
No objection. All right, audience, the reason I'm doing that is because item A, the water plan presentation, is going to be a long item. The council attachment is some seven hundred pages long, it's going to be a long presentation, and I know many of you are here for the purpose of the uh, proclamation. And if you don't wish to be here for the entire meeting and wish to leave. I'm going to give you the opportunity to do that. All right, so we're gonna switch item A and item B this evening. Council, we have before us a resolution on workers' right, not a resolution, I'm sorry, that was last time, a proclamation on workers' rights and fair labor practices. Um, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, I heard Mr. Beeler first. So we had a motion by councillor Hart, second by councillor Booner to approve a resolution proclaiming that city council supports workers' rights and fair labor practices. Is there debate on this item? All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. By two vote aye, motion passes. I'm going to sign this. And then I'm going to read the proclamation into the record. The proclamation is presented to me in English and is extremely difficult to uh, translate to Spanish while I'm reading it. So um, I'm going to read it slowly and I'm going to allow you time. I'm gonna stop at the end of each period. Would you like to hold, have a copy so that you can look at that? Yes, yes. Your chief, pass that to her. All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Sunnyside, Washington is committed to upholding the rights, dignity, and well-being of all workers within its community. And whereas the agricultural industry is a cornerstone of Sunnyside's economy, with farm workers playing a crucial role in its success and sustainability. Sustainability. And whereas all workers, including those in agriculture, deserve fair wages, safe working conditions, and the respect they are entitled to as essential contributors to our community. And whereas the city council of Sunnyside formally expresses its unwavering support for the rights of all workers, including farm workers. And commits to ensuring that their contributions are honored with fair treatment and safe working conditions. And now therefore, I, Dean Bresser, as mayor of Sunnyside, Washington. To hereby proclaim that the city council reaffirms its dedication to promoting and supporting fair labor practices within the community. And encourages all residents, businesses, and community organizations to join in standing in solidarity with laborers advocating for fair treatment. And equitable working conditions across all industries, ensuring that every worker is treated with the dignity and respect they deserve. In test. In testimony whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside this twenty sixth day of August in the year two thousand twenty four. I will need. May, may I have that copy back? I need to sign that one as well. Thank you, Ralph. All right, and Ms. Fresto, I know you wanted to make some comments here. I'm gonna give you the opportunity if you'd like to, you were going to.
I think I said everything I had to say the last time.
Okay, very well. And again, I want to thank you for your efforts in, in writing this up. I know you put a lot of time into it, so I appreciate that. And recognizing that. You know, with Labor Day coming up, it is the time that we recognize our workers, and in Sunnyside, without farm workers, our economy would not exist. And to repeat that in English, I just said, we appreciate, with Labor Day coming up, we appreciate all workers, but especially our agricultural workers who make our economy possible. If it wasn't for all of the agricultural workers, we wouldn't have an economy. And somebody added to that, we wouldn't have food either, so you all have made our lives much better, so thank you so much.
Mayor, there's two originals, if you'd like to give councillor Faust the one.
Councillor Faust, you may have one of the originals. And donate that to whoever you wish, if you would. Oh, Ms. Fresto. Would they like to come up and take a picture with all of council, or just?
We can.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so how do we want? Do we want to arrange ourselves with them, or?
Guys, do your thing, I'm just watching. You, you don't mind, I don't, I don't wanna. I'll, I'll, I'll go, I'll go here. I'll be next to them, how about?
Okay, and I understand that there may be some people who wish to leave after the proclamation, and if so, you uh, we'll give you a little bit of time to do that. Gracias, gracias por venir. And thank you so much for your help in this, ma'am. It's awesome. And those of you who are standing up against the wall, that opens up a few seats if you, if you'd like to sit. Uh, some of you have been standing for a little while now, so. All right, let's continue. With the next agenda item, the water system plan presentation. This promises to be a big presentation. We are not gonna vote on this tonight, this is going to be a. Presentation, we're gonna see this, it's going to be setting us up for a public hearing on September nine. And you're welcome to return for the public hearing, but at this evening's meeting, we are gonna listen to presentation from HLA. And perhaps Public Works will chip in a little bit, but uh. At any rate, let's move on with that. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item comes before you discuss the water system plan, as you mentioned, in preparation for that public hearing. Which is again, September ninth, like you mentioned, so uh, just to give some context. We've hit the point where the rubber has certainly met the road when it comes to our water infrastructure and our well infrastructure, uh. We've had several wells that aren't necessarily functioning perfectly. Uh, small fraction are really carrying the bulk of the weight, so uh, when it comes to delivering water to our citizens, so. Uh, the reality is that we're gonna have to pay for this in, infrastructure. Um, you know, as much as ten percent uh, increase per year for the next several years, so. Uh, thank you to HLA, who's worked really hard on this, and, and our Public Works Director, Raul Sanchez, so with that being said, I'll, that's how I'll tee it up, Mayor.
All right. Sir, what is your name? I've totally forgotten.
Uh, it is Rob Scott with HLA Engineering.
Thank you, Rob Scott.
And I was hoping all of that shirt was for me, but I guess.
I'm sure it was.
I find the work idea interesting, I understand why a lot of people would leave before I start speaking, um. Um, it depends on what you think good news is. So, uh, just some background on the water system plan, um. I, I was here earlier this year to talk about some of the, the basics of the plan before we got the first draft off to Department of Health. Uh, the, the foundation of a water system plan is that every municipal water supplier in the state is required to have a plan on record every ten years. Establishing what the city's growth projections are and what, basically what projects it has to do. To be able to keep a functional water system to deliver safe drinking water to the people it serves. And so, um, a big piece of the water system planning effort, besides being required every ten years, is that you need to have a water system plan. That is approved and in good standing with the state to be eligible for certain funding programs. And so, um, as we'll get into the presentation, there are a couple program, uh, projects in the next couple of years that we expect to use those funding programs. And so this water system plan is, so one of the first pieces in establishing what the city needs to do to get to a point where it can undergo some of those major projects. Uh, so the, the slide here says that the current operating permit expired in May thirty first of two thousand twenty four. That doesn't reflect on the city at all. The plan was submitted to Department of Health at the appropriate timelines. And then Department of Health are, somewhat arbitrarily took an extra four months to review the plan. Um, the, that, that May deadline doesn't really mean anything as far as Department of Health is concerned, so don't be concerned that you're out of standing or that you're in any way. Um, you know, that there's anything at stake here, it's just. Uh, that was, that was the date by which Department of Health was hoping that the plan would be approved. And so we got those comments back from them in June. And so at this point, we have a draft of the plan that we've worked on with city staff. And, excuse me, and so, um, as part of the process, uh, after your next meeting, there'll be a public hearing. That is, um, part of the requirements for submitting the water system plan is that public hearing to discuss what's in the plan. And to also discuss the city's water use efficiency goals. And so after the next meeting, our hope would be then that we could get this to Department of Health. They have already, uh, we've been in contact, they're agreeing to uh, streamline the review of the next draft. So that you will have an approval by November to be eligible for whatever funding you seek at that time. And so we will be in constant contact with them to make sure that is available if and when you decide to use it. So the, the city's planning projections in its planning efforts, uh, is a two percent annual growth rate. And so the, the nuts and bolts of the plan are essentially taking your twenty twenty three population and projecting forward twenty years. And then seeing what the proportional impact on your water demand in the city will be, and then use those numbers to establish. Be, over the next twenty years, when you need to do certain projects and what, um, basically, what, what the. Uh, the chokeholds are in your system where, you know, you got, you got a well done, okay, now your next project is a reservoir to keep your capacity growing. Uh, so, uh, that's just sort of the, the specifics of your population growth there. And then the resulting impact is by twenty forty three, in theory, on a maximum day, you'd be, uh, have a demand of almost ten million gallons a day. And just based on your current capacity, you're not there, and so how do we get you there? So, next slide. So the, the city's water system is made up really of six components, your wells or your sources, uh, how water gets into your, into your uh, distribution system. Treatment, um, you, at this point, you chlorinate your water to uh, prevent Eco, E coli outbreaks. And uh, things of that nature where there's a small amount of chlorine in your water. To be able to prevent bacterial contamination, um, if and when that may get to your system. You have your reservoirs, which are your elevated storage tanks that establish the water pressure and give you. Uh, extra storage for times where your demand outpaces your well supplies, such as during a fire is the main one, a lot of your fire storage or your reservoir storage is dedicated. To having enough water in your tanks to fight a fire at, um, which, when your fire hydrants are open, you're typically going to be having to demand quite a bit outpacing. Uh, what you would normally be seeing. Uh, your booster stations and PRVs, there are portions of your system that have a high enough elevation that. Your, your wells fill your main reservoirs, and then at the higher elevations, you need additional pumping capacity to lift the water basically to your next step. Uh, to serve your highest elevation. Then your distribution system is the pipes under roads that uh, deliver water around your system. And then your water rights, which are not a physical idea, or they're not a physical item, they are a legal item where you're, the city's only allowed to pump a certain amount of water. In a given year, and you're only allowed to pump a certain flow rate at any given particular time. So this, uh, thi- this is a map out of the plan, that, there are a couple diagrams, the, the important parts to see are ba- basically bottom right there. All of your wells are at a low elevation, and your water gets pumped up, up, up to the highest elevation, which is sort of the, the northwest corner there. And then once your water is in the highest tank, there are what's called pressure reducing valves in your system, so that if the water needs to come back down. Uh, you don't have too much pressure. If you were to try to deliver pressure to your lowest. Uh, services from that upper pressure zone, the pressure from that tank uh, could cause damage just because of the elevation difference in water. That's the fun thing about civil engineering, it's basically just gravity and. Yeah, so, next slide. So the city's uh, has eight groundwater wells, uh, that are numbered six through thirteen. Uh, you have a total pump capacity in those wells of six thousand five hundred gallons per minute. Right now, your wells six and seven aren't suitable for continuous use because of. Uh, some aesthetic concerns and some sanding problems where if they get used for too long at a time, you start to have water quality problems and. People complain, and so the city tries to not operate those for long periods of time when it can avoid that. You have well ten, which is an emergency source, similarly for a water quality issue, it's not used. And then you, so be, because of that, because of those wells that aren't working, uh, you have, right now you have some difficulty maintaining sufficient production or well pumping into your system. Earlier in the year, you actually had two more wells that you weren't able to use, so you were actually in, you know, really kind of in a bad shape there, but that has since been addressed, and so. You're, you're in much better shape than you were at the beginning of the year when we first talked about this. Next slide. Uh, treatment, so you, uh, I mentioned earlier that you have a chlorine residual in your system to. Prevent bacterial contamination, so the majority of your wells use go, uh, chlorine gas cylinders. And then you use sodium hypochlorite or uh, essentially bleach, uh, at wells ten and eleven. Next slide. The storage, you have your, your uh, main reservoirs or your grand. The storage, you have your main reservoirs or your grand view reservoirs with a total there of a little over 2.4 million gallons of storage. And then the skyline reservoir is that upper pressure zone that I mentioned that provides pressure to zones two and three, which are your highest elevations. And right now, based on in the water system plan, there's specific guidelines and calculations that Department of Health wants to see to determine how much storage it thinks you should have. And so right now, you're coming up on that edge where you really do need to have additional storage to be able to serve the citizens in a emergency or just a period of time where you have higher demand, like in the middle of the summer because of irrigation demands and a fire, that kind of thing. Next slide. And then the city's booster station is located at the site of your grand river reservoir. It transfers water from basically from that first tank up to the second higher tank into zone three. And that that station works well and it has enough capacity for the future. It's just the pumps are wearing out and they'll need to be replaced as a maintenance item within this planning period. Excellent. The distribution system, the city has about 75 miles of pipe, four inch diameter through 16 inch. Like any city, there's ongoing leak repair and pipe replacement that occurs as just the kind of the cost of doing business, pipes wear out and get replaced. There are the pipes supply water service and fire protection to your customers. There are areas of the system that will need pipe up sizing and looping, which is you have right now, you have dead end mines where you have a long line that doesn't connect to anything except services. You want to see that looped because it increases your fire protection and it maintains service pressure. And there are also aesthetic concerns and we have long lines that don't loop. Sometimes the water can seem sort of stale to the customers. And so you just like to keep all your water moving. Next slide. Water rights. So you have a total of eight permits, claims and certificates that allow you to deliver a little over 5,000 acre feet per year. As one of the comments we got in the first draft of the water system plan, the Department of Ecology, who oversees the water rights, they disagree with what we thought you had for your instantaneous water rates. That number used to be about 8,000 gallons per minute. They think it's closer to five. Those numbers came out of the previous water system plan. And we actually are going to start working with somebody who's a water rights expert to narrow down into that a little bit. It's not a slam dunk case because like a lot of things when you start talking about, you know, the legal ease of all of this, we don't know where it's going to end up. We do think you have a pretty good case to have the number we think it is. But we will, that is one of the projects that we're going to start working on as soon as possible as part of this water system planning effort to one way or another, get that established. If this is the number you have, you want to know that now so you can plan accordingly. Then so at this point, really the immediate priorities in the system are to rehabilitate those two wells that you already have that you're not using. It's a lot, it's a lot more cost effective to rehabilitate wells that you have as opposed to drilling new wells. That being said, even once those wells are rehabilitated within your 20 year planning period and really within probably the next 10 years, you'll want to drill a new well. And then you also want to construct a new reservoir. And all of those are just to increase the capacity of your system. But we do believe that that rehabilitation effort is definitely the biggest priority because you get the most bang for your buck really because you're rehabilitating an existing well. And as many people know, drilling a new well is quite expensive. Next slide. So the ongoing priorities of your water system, addressing older and leaking water mains is important. Anytime you have a system that is leaking water, that's water you're paying to pump and chlorinate that you're not getting any revenue for. And in general, I think we all want to be good stewards of the resources. And so that's a high priority, looping water mains, replacing small diameter pipes to make sure you have good fire flow in the city. And then upsizing water mains for future growth as development continues to occur throughout the city. So the, not to harp on what seems like the subject of the night, but financing. So DWSRF application is what we've been targeting with the schedule of this plan all along. From the beginning of this planning effort, we knew that there were projects that the city really wanted to be applying for this upcoming November. And so having those water system plan in place to do that was a high priority. Based on the most recent year, the terms of DWSRF applications are approximately a 20 year, 1.75% interest rate. The debt service associated with some of these projects is lifted here and they are clearly quite sizable. These aren't all projects you're going to be doing next year, but these are projects that we want to be working towards so that as they need to be completed, you have the rate structure in place so that it's not a surprise. You want to be getting your rates to a point where you can support projects of this magnitude. And then you want to be building reserves for future projects. Things come up like earlier this year where the city had to do some of the work on their wells. Having reserves in place to do that, we all understand that's important. We want to have money available for that. And so that's just one more piece of what the financing in this water system plan addresses. So right now, on average, the single family residential water rate is a little over $36 per month. Some of that is base rates, some of that is volumetric charge. So people who are using more water do get charged more for that water use. Over the next 10 years in this plan, there's approximately $47 million worth of work identified. Some of that is water main work that isn't as critical as some of this well and reservoir work, but it is work that the city wants to be aware of. And so working with city staff, we've looked at a couple of different ways to get to this point. You know, some communities like the idea of if they know they need to do a water rate raise, they do it all at once or most of it all at once because they don't want to have to keep coming back over to do it. Some cities want to step it up over time. I've worked in communities who prefer to do it both ways. It really has to do with what the council wants and what the people say they want. But at the end of the day, we are looking at the water rates in 2034 being approximately double what they are now. And so when I came here tonight, I literally thought everyone was here to hear that number. And so I'm kind of glad they weren't, but that being said, this is where we see the water system at this point. So the next steps at this point are to get the final draft prepared where I think there's a couple of things we are going to be working with city staff to get into the plan. That public hearing at the first meeting in September, get this plan off to Department of Health for an approval in November so that we can be able to, some of those well projects, November of this year, put an application for that. And then we're looking at that reservoir and some of that other water main work potentially happening down the line. The timing for that may be a little more variable, but those well projects are absolutely the ones we want to be talking about as soon as possible. And if that is everything, I understand we're not going for any particular action tonight, but I assume question and answer.
And I don't know if everybody's had the chance to read all 700 or so pages of the.
To be fair, about 650 of that is appendices.
It was a lot to download. I know my computer timed out on me and I didn't have time to go back to it once I got home. But council members, do you have questions for Mr. Scott? Mr. Beeler.
On the two Ls that are second sand sometimes, do you drill them down lower? Do you repack the base or do you filter it?
My understanding is a lot of it has to do with potentially replacing the screens because part of what happens is you end up with some bacterial growth on the screens and you get blinding. And so as you start to pull sand, it starts to physically blind on the screen. And so you stop being able to physically pull water out of it very well. You're basically blocking it up before it has a chance to rest. But that's my understanding is that you're not necessarily reestablishing the well. It's more about cleaning the screens and replacing them. But I believe this was a project that our office had talked about a couple of years ago. And so we had a cost estimate at that time to do it, but I don't recall specifically what that work entailed.
Other questions? Miss Ripley.
When was, what year was the last well built?
Well, do you, it was at 2017? When was 12 and 13 going?
Yeah, that was before my time here. So, but I think it was 12 and 13 were the last ones that are out there on the monsons and it was prior to 15.
Okay, it was a little further back.
And we didn't have a plan for more wells, huh?
The new wells are in your previous water system plan that was completed in, well, if this was due in 2014, so it was about 2014 when your last water system plan. And it does identify new wells in that plan. But up until somewhat recently, there hasn't been the capacity need to do those. It was part of what made it as much of a priority as it was is the fact that some of your wells started to cease to function the way we would like them to. And so all of a sudden, this, you know, within the last couple of years, it was more of an emergency that we were looking at and said, you know, we need to do something about these. But, you know, the machine takes time to start moving, so.
Is there a plan B for the money?
So I can say what Department of Health said to me, which we've talked about rates, which is they establish affordable water rates as 2.5% of your median household income, which is higher than the number that went on there. So they tend to believe that your rates are going to be like triple digit numbers before they get too concerned, unfortunately. There are programs in place. There's other funding programs. DWSRF is entirely loan and it may be a shorter term. There are other programs like the Rural Development RD program, which is a 40 year program. But again, you're probably looking mostly at loans. So you might be able to get a lower loan payment over a longer time. But grants are a difficult thing to come by in the potable water world, partially because they really do look at rates having to be pretty high before they'll step in on that kind of thing.
Other questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So I didn't read it word by word, but I did skim through the whole pages. There's a lot of opportunity that I believe that, you know, we should consider. One of them being that states on one of the pages, 4-4, 20% of the city customers have an SVID connection for separate irrigation. It also says that residents can connect to it. And it says that, you know, we're going to start, I guess, educating the public on if they want to connect to the SVID, but I think that's another opportunity that, you know, we could do. Definitely, and they already pay for that service annually. Might as well, you know, might as well get it connected and that might reduce the water consumption, you know.
I completely agree with you and I think what that may do is it may push some of the projects out. I don't think that it's going to completely replace your need to get wells drilled. And at the very least, the rehabilitation effort. But yes, when being able to convert over to SVID for irrigation demands would reduce some of your peaking. And it would also be a financial impact on the citizens. My understanding is that that connection is at the homeowner's expense to actually do the physical connection work. And so that is, that is a hurdle, a financial. But yes, in a perfect world, I would say you would definitely be using SVID for more of your irrigation demands than you are now. But it is difficult on a homeowner basis to make that step in some cases.
SVID is a little bit interesting to work with because if they're putting in a new line in front of your house, they will give a connection to every lot. However, if that line is already there and your house came in after the line was put in, it is on the resident to get that hooked up. And there's a process to that. I don't know how fast it is. I understand from some people that it's notoriously slow, but I haven't personally had to deal with that. I know when they put the line on in front of my house, I use that exclusively for my watering and that really has helped with the water usage in my place, so.
That is definitely something to keep in mind for new development though, when that's available. As new homes are going in, if that's something that be connected to at that point, it makes it so that these growth projections maybe flatten a little bit because each new house doesn't see the same water demand as you're seeing with your existing houses.
Okay, Ms. Hart, did you have your?
I did have a question as regards to SVID. The water that residents are charged for is so far, a lot of people don't, can't get to it because of the infrastructure. But would SVID put a stop to that if it was like a drought year? Because they might, you know, keep the water for the farmers and that sort of thing and the salmon and whatnot. Is that a concern at all? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying, whether the water gets curtailed by SVID so that.
During a drought year.
Yeah, I don't know specifically how SVID works here. I know that is, but Ral does, so.
No, I don't know a lot, but I know some. Around here, SVID has senior rights over ROSA. So therefore, if there was a bad drought, ROSA would be the one that would be impacted first. So that's to answer your question. And a lot of it too, sometimes it is, sounds unfair because the property may have irrigation water rights, but you don't have a delivery, but you're still paying for it. And that's always been the hard case with a lot of residents because that's how SVID sees it. They don't, they don't own the water, as they say, because it's made by God. But they, the right for you to have the water is what they're, how they sell the water is, is they don't have a say in how much water we're going to have every year, but they manage the system. So therefore you pay for it if you have that irrigation water rate.
Thank you.
I will say in many cases too, when people have an irrigation connection, oftentimes they, people will have a separate water connection so that if it's, if for whatever reason you don't have your SVID water, a lot of times people do have it plumbed to be able to use potable if needed with appropriate backflow prevention in place. So that is something that oftentimes comes up in those situations.
So I did see the previous one from previous year. It was a lot shorter than this one.
It's the appendices, they'll kill you.
So my question is, who is going to be in charge of all these, of all these other little things like a school outreach program on section 4-3? Also brochures addressing the consumer leaks. It says that, you know, we'll be sending that. Is that part of the cost?
That is work that the Public Works Department is already doing in most cases. You had a water use efficiency program in your last plan. And in working with Department of Health this time around, they wanted to see a couple of additional goals and measures or what they call them to address that. Because a lot of what you were doing in the past was education based and that's important. But they essentially said, you're doing a lot of education. Can we see something a little different? And that was actually when we brainstormed some of this SVID and the discussions with the industrial users as well. So the majority of that is already being done by your public work staff.
Other questions or comments, Ms. Vasquez?
Yeah, so I did, I was reading, it says the current operating permit expired May 31st of this year. So maybe it's a dumb question, but I just, just for clarification, is it common and normal for cities to allow the operating permits to expire or?
Yes, it is the short answer. And in this case, we actually were, as I mentioned, we're on pace for it. Department of Health, like many public agencies, has been slower in their reviews. And so we had the first draft into them in November anticipating getting comments back from them in February, March. And then, I mean, just seemed, we didn't get our comments back until June. They anticipated delivery scheduled back to Department of Health was actually by that May deadline. And they have no problems with this. Really, that's something that they look at to say, you need to do this every 10 years. We already have a draft into them. So as far as they're concerned, as long as the city is making progress towards that, there's no concern on their part for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So because I did skim through all the pages, I was able to catch an error and it got me, you know, looking into it more. It said the city of Silla. So one of these pages, it did say the city of Silla. No idea what the city of Silla had to do with Sunnyside. So I went on to their website and I found their report, this same report.
Probably looks somewhat similar.
Yes, a lot similar. Just a few sections here and there. What I did see is that their emergency, I guess, event, like planning, is a lot more extensive than ours. Ours lists a lot of the phone numbers to contact, the names, addresses. It doesn't really, it doesn't really give the same idea as the way that Silla has it. Is there a reason why? I mean, do we not have a plan in place for emergencies? Or is that something that we need to take care of, you know, as a council?
My understanding is that there is some emergency planning that has been done in recent years that in putting this plan together, we didn't have electronically. I've heard multiple times about some binders that Public Works has. The short answer is that the emergency planning that gets identified in the water system plan typically just references what the city has on file for their planning efforts. But this document was what we had available to connect into the plan. But I do understand that there are additional things that Public Works has just not attached to this. But I don't know exactly what those are.
Ral, do you know of?
So we, yes, what he's referring to, there is a binder that has for emergency plan. It would. it would refer to it to, and it is in a binder. Um, but yes, a lot of that information like Rob was talking about should be going into this plan.
Okay. Is there, do we, do we have electric, electronic?
No, we don't. It's, it's a binder, which ought, should be updated to probably and added to another platform instead of a binder.
Okay, so maybe something that we could take a look at, if we have some time?
It would be something that we would, yeah, we would want to include into the plan.
All right.
Part of this process?
Yeah, it would be part of this new, uh, water system plan.
The, the plan is in there, I think we just need to update ours so we can update it to this.
And then upload it?
And upload.
It'll be eight hundred pages long.
Those were actually longer. Silas, I mean, City of Sila was like nine hundred and some, but.
I'll have to give Justin a hard time about that.
Yep. Further questions or comments? Well, we've got a lot of information to skim over. Um, kudos to the deputy mayor for getting as far through it as he did over the weekend. Um, I saw city clerk printing out a version of it and it was quite a stack of papers and they were printed back to back, if I remember correctly, right? Yeah, two sided printing. So yeah, that's a lot of reading and we all get to go through that. So, um, yeah, we've got until the ninth to, uh, to get all the way through, that's two weeks and yeah, hope you all like reading late into the evening. It's, it's captivating this. I wish I could get it in an ebook form and I'm just keeping on my Kindle, but that'd be probably more than I could ask for, right? Wouldn't that be neat?
That would be good.
All right, well, so if there's no more questions on this one, thank you, sir, for your presentation. If you had, do you have any more you want to share with us or?
No, I think I don't have much of an audience anymore, so.
Okay. They, they may be fascinated by this and so, yeah, our next regular meeting, we will have a public hearing on this and you're all invited back to, uh, comment and to hear what, uh, hear what is said on that and, and hear council's comments on the rest of the reading that we get to do. But, um, yeah, by all means, it's going to affect all of us here. And this is a conversation that was going to happen now, um, irregardless, completely separate from the budget discussion and, and everything else that's going on. This is something that absolutely has to happen as far as the state is concerned and we have to be aware of our wells. We have been aware of the short files of our wells for a couple of years and so we have been working towards, um, remedying that. Um, currently we have not had any pressure problems or water delivery problems, but we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. There are other communities around the valley that do have those problems and we want to make sure that we don't join their number. So it's all part of the process. So thank you for being here and hearing that out. Next item on the agenda, item four, sure I didn't skip anything. Items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions, and we did not meet for any boards and commissions appointments in the last two weeks. Um, we did appoint a few of them prior to that, but we have not met in the last two weeks for that. So, um, if anybody is interested in applying for an open seat on a board or, um, commissioned, please get that, um, the application form is online and it does need to be filled out completely. It does sometimes seem like an awful lot to some people, but yeah, we need to have all of that information. So please get that filled out, get that turned in so that we can consider your application. Item B, other reports, announcements and/or questions by council. And as usual, usual, we're going to start with Mr. Beeler.
I've got nothing to report.
All right, Ms. Vasquez.
Yeah, so very, I'll, I got an announcement, so it's an event that will be happening, happening here in Sunnyside. So it's going to be in September, the twenty second. I'll bring some flyers for the next meeting, but it's going to be the third annual suicide prevention walk. It's the Walk for Hope and it's support, in support of the fighters and admiring the survivors and to helping awareness and just to remember loved ones who have committed suicide. It's going to be held Sunday, September twenty second of this year at four P M. in downtown and there is going to be a lot of businesses coming together in support of this and it's going to be a really good time to come and there's going to be resources, arts and crafts, games. There's going to be a balloon release in honor of the people who have left and apparel for purchase in support to the families who have lost loved ones recently. And there will be a guest speaker, Kimberly Starr. So I invite everyone to come and let's support our community and let's show that we care and that we come together in those hard moments. And that would be it.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. Ms. Ripley?
No, nothing.
Okay, Ms. Fosso?
I actually do. Um, I would like to motion to suspend the rules.
Council, is there objection to suspending, suspending the rules?
No objection.
Rules are suspended for what, however, I'd like to be able to take notes on that.
Um, I'd actually like to address, um, the public and I think it's important to address, um, the unfortunate sentiment, um, that, think how I said it on, on Saturday, of the mishandling of funds, I think the malpractices in our city hall. Um, I actually took it upon myself to issue a communication piece to the community saying that I will do everything in my power as long as I am here on this seat to bring forth accountability. I will do everything in my power to make sure that we derive our work with transparency and with values and with dignity and the best part of this all, the most important part of this all is with integrity that I think we are missing in city councils, in, in, in city hall and with previous administrations. So, um, I didn't get to add some, uh, items to the agenda and I'd like to, uh, share a couple of items that I'm going to bring forward. There are actually a couple resolutions and excuse me because I was running out of my house trying to make it here on time and they're a little bit everywhere, so just give me a moment. Good thing the rules are suspended. Deputy Mayor?
If you have a copy of this?
I'm not sure if anybody's missing another one, but I have one right here. You don't have one, Ms. Ripley, I apologize. You don't have one either? Okay, I hope I made enough copies. We could, we could share because I think.
And I just sent the copy to you of this resolution.
So, um, when we met on Saturday, um, there were some comments made, um, by, by Mayor Borzma, um, that just didn't sit well with me. As a matter of fact, I had to call for a recess because I was that infuriated. One of those comments was, we chose to kick the can down the road because we knew council was going to come in, I was going to be able to deal with this mess. I find that troubling. I find that as a malpractice of leadership, I don't find integrity at all and I don't find responsibility in that. So I bring forward to you, my fellow council members, a resolution expressing a vote of no confidence in Mayor Dean Borzma and calling for his removal from office. And I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the Sunnyside City Council has reviewed the recent financial report presented by the city manager, which reveals a nearly a four million budget deficit. Whereas this deficit has been attributed to a series of overspending unaccounted expenses and improper budgeting practices during Mayor Dean Borzma's administration. Whereas the financial mismanagement under Mayor Borzma's leadership has severely impacted the city's ability to fund critical services, jeopardize future projects and created a significant burden on the community. Whereas the city council is deeply concerned about the lack of fiscal responsibility and transparency demonstrated by the current administration. Whereas there is an immediate need for measures of accountability and leadership that prioritizes the fiscal health and will bring with the community. Now therefore it be resolved that the, that the Sunnyside City Council hereby expresses the vote of no confidence in Mayor Dean Borzma and calls for his immediate removal as mayor. Be a further resolved that the city, Sunnyside City Council shall promptly initiate the process of selecting a new mayor to lead the city through this financial crisis and restore trust in the city's governance. Be a further resolved that the city council calls for immediate measures to adjust, to address the budgetary crisis and restore financial stability to the city of Sunnyside. And I hope this can be adopted. Now, um, it is a process to recall, this is going to be a symbolic resolution. Um, and I can't imagine our city continuing to leap under, lea- uh, uh, continuing to grow under a leadership or move forward, if I should say, under a leadership that has not practiced, modeled integrity, transparency nor accountability. So I motion for this resolution to go forward and, uh, expressing with me, um, a vote of no confidence in our current mayor. And the motion is on the table.
We have a motion.
One second.
We have a motion, a second. And if you will indulge me, since the rules are suspended, I would like, uh, Mr. Riley, our attorney, to comment on this, if you would be willing to, sir.
A vote of low confidence. Um, I'm also going to submit a, a resolution, um, uh, putting forth, introducing an ordinance, um, to, uh, two point zero eight point zero eight zero regarding the removal of mayor or deputy mayor, um, in the case of der- dereliction of duty or code of conduct violations, which our city does not currently have. Leadership.
Very well. I could mark that, we have a motion by council. Second by deputy mayor. Okay, debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, three to four, motion carries.
The rest, the second resolution that I want to put forward is actually an introduction, um, to a new ordinance, uh, looking at our, at our current ordinances and I am all about systems, I have mentioned this on this council, that I am here to create systems that work for the community. My loyalty will always remain in, in, in community and I want to make sure that moving forward, there are systems in place where we can actually use and lean on to hold leadership accountable. Now, I'm going to pass this resolution, uh, introducing this new ordinance. Let me know if y'all need an extra. That's it.
Do you have enough for everybody or? Jackie will take a picture, man. Okay, Jackie takes pictures.
So in realizing that there's no current ordinance right now, um, allowing council to revisit, um, leaderships, um, capacity, um, and revisit, um, leadership's inaction, um, and take action on that if we don't believe that our current leadership as mayor or deputy mayor are acting in good faith for the community. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read, um, the writing and the language in this new resolution and how it will be introduced. Um, resolution of the city council of the city of Sunnyside in Washington introducing ordinance two point zero eight point zero eight zero regarding the removal of the mayor or deputy mayor from office due to dereliction of duty or code of conduct violations. Whereas the city of Sunnyside is committed to ensuring that all elected officials uphold the highest standards of conduct and faithfully execute their duties in accordance with their oath of office and whereas the city council recognizes a need for informal process to address instances where the mayor or deputy mayor may be found derelict in their duties or violation of the oath of office or the city's code of conduct. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city of Sunnyside to maintain the integrity and accountability of its selected officials and that includes me. Now, therefore, resolved by the city councils of the city of Sunnyside in Washington as follows, the city council hereby introduces ordinance two point zero eight point zero eight zero, which establishes the processes where the removal of the mayor or deputy mayor from office is found to be derelict in duty defined by R C W thirty five point eighteen point two zero zero or in violation of the oath of office or in violation of the city's code of conduct. Organisms two point zero eight point zero eight zero provides that a mayor or deputy mayor found to be derelict in their duty in violation of their oath of office or violation of the code of conduct may be removed from their duties by a majority vote of the city council. If they vote to remove the mayor or deputy mayor successfully, the officer has forty eight hours to respond to the vote and request a hearing before the city council. If a hearing is requested, the city council will elect an officer to preside over the hearing. No less than thirty days after the vote to remove the mayor or deputy mayor or after the hearing is held, the city council shall draft a resolution to officially strip the officer of their title and call for the election of a new officer to fill the vacant position. The city council directs that this resolution and the accompanying ordinance be presented for discussion, public input and consideration at the next regular city council meeting. This res- resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. So I motion to introduce, uh, ordinance two point zero eight point zero eight zero. Uh, and I hope that my fellow council members will think hard about putting this forward to make sure that the generations to come have a say in the lack of leadership, in the lack of trust and the lack of accountability in the fee no longer as a community, as a council, as a body of a council can trust them, then we have the power and the ability to remove or strip them of that title that they don't deserve. I motion to put this, um, reservation forward and adopting ordinance two point zero eight point zero eight zero.
I second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. So debate on this item.
Question, baby.
Question, Ms. Hart?
So we have a resolution here to create an ordinance for a removal of a, of the, uh, mayor and or deputy mayor. Right? That's what this.
Strip them of their title, whatever we call.
I didn't ask that, I, uh.
I'm just adding for clarification.
Yeah, but it's not in there, the, what, those particular jurisdictions are not in there. But what my question is, is this is an ordinance for the removal of the deputy or and, or are you any, it looks like any council member who's on the council?
The mayor or deputy mayor from office due to dereliction of duty or code of conduct violations.
Down here, don't you say something about any elected officer, any elected official?
Where exactly?
I saw it there and I should have circled it when I saw it. Um, because you said of its, I think the best interest, maybe that's the way I read, I misread that, I'm sorry. But the question that I actually have is you want to pass this, but first you want to pass this, which we already voted on. And that is for what?
It's a symbolic, uh, resolution.
How does it be symbolic when you want to remove somebody from their position?
We just clarified that it's stripping them of their title.
How is that symbolic?
I believe what Ms. Fosso's saying, Ms. Hart, is that, uh, they just now passed a resolution of no confidence in the mayor, which is completely separate from wanting to add an ordinance to the Sunnyside municipal codes to have a pathway.
Separate. Separate.
Yet the idea of this, of this ordinance, um, about the, regarding the removal of mayor or deputy mayor, um, et cetera, I get that.
Okay. Then why don't you understand, Councilor Hart?
No, I, I, I'm trying to understand. That I understand, okay? That's what I'm trying to say. That's it.
Thank you, can we recall the question?
I have, I have a question.
I think there's still debate, Ms. Fosso.
Oh, the part that you, I don't know, you, you said it's something like including me after you read some?
Yeah, and it was, it was, it really is just a call, um, Councilor Vasquez, just for clarification, is that any one of us can be held accountable, that none any one of us can be held accountable, that none of us are immune to accountability. I did not mean to derail um the actual intent of the resolution, so thank you for that question, I just wanted to clarify that. But none of us are immune to accountability, and all of us should be practicing transparency. That was my side note.
Uh so that I have one more question. So this is pretty much just a resolution of a new ordinance.
Yeah.
Um so I guess my question is, well, couldn't we still remove them, an example, just as we did right now, by doing a vote of no confidence?
Well, if 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 we adopt an ordinance, um we have to wait a few days before, um it it it's, it allows for public hearing. So we would have to wait. This wouldn't be.
Instead of doing like a vote of no confidence, then they have a chance to kind of come and
Correct.
and have a hearing, and then the public also puts their input.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
Current current code does not have a process for removing a mayor, deputy mayor from office.
Okay.
Um it would seem on the surface that because the mayor is elected by council, then at any time council can uh vote to remove the mayor, but that's actually not in our Sunnyside Municipal Code. And so in order for that to happen, if you were to try to do that without doing that, then there would be, there's really nothing you can do, there's not a pathway to that.
Yep. So we need to adopt an ordinance in order to be able to get there in the future.
To like change the whole system.
Correct, correct. It's a good question.
Further debate. I would like to make one comment, and that comment is this, it is important to remember that the mayor is kind of an honorary title. Uh mayor is appointed by council, mayor has no extra authority, no extra votes, his votes don't weigh anymore. And so when the budget was passed last time, the budget was passed by council, not by the mayor. I didn't, the mayor does not present the budget to council, that is the manager's job. And so essentially, the mayor is a council member who simply chairs the meeting. So and there, I did say a couple of things on Saturday that I that I do regret. Um I had not slept because once I had heard about this, I did not sleep well. And so the words I said were unfortunate, and I did regret them, I do regret them. Um but yeah. So we have a vote on the table. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no?
No.
I two vote aye, motion passes. Alright. So all you've got, Ms. Rosso.
Yes, I do, though that was, that was it for now.
Okay. I guess the next one on the list is Mr. Galvin.
So my my concerns also are with the with the crossings, I guess, at the school. I understand, Mr. City Manager, you talk to the school. Is is there a plan, or what 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 are we gonna do with that? I I drop off my kids too at the at that.
So um deputy mayor, so uh myself, Raul, the school district, um their security personnel have all met, and our communication staff, so I think the optic of it looked much more severe than the actual execution plan, so the the initial concern was there was gonna be a lot of equipment out there, so they've done all their pre-work. So there'll be no heavy equipment in the road during the school hours. And um so what I've been told and assured by the by the construction company is there's going to be cones up. Um that'll guide students out of the street. I know we had a citizen that was asking and saying that kids will be going into the street. We know that some kids will be going into the street, no matter if we had a a million cones out there, but um so a- as as the concrete's drying on the sidewalks, they'll have uh construction workers guiding uh the students and and uh my first question being new deputy mayor was why in the heck are we doing this now? So but the the issue really was because of some grant funding, we had to do it, it was sort of like a now or never type situation, but um they've done a tremendous amount of pre-work, cause my concern, I I was ready to scrap the the project and move it to another time, but so um the logistics have been worked out, and uh I think myself and Ryan Maxwell, the superintendent felt really good about what we heard. Now, I'm still nervous about what will happen, uh you know, and what you're assured are are two different things. I have a an eleven-year-old son and lots of friends who run around the neighborhood, and they don't always do what you say, so it is my concern that some kids might wind up in the street, but but it's going to be a team effort, they're gonna put some extra personnel at the school. And um so I think I think the plan, I I think we do have a well-executed plan, Jackie has already put out a lot of information. The school district is also starting to message on their social media platforms, so um I'm really hopeful, but you know, the best plans are mice and men, as they say, I I really hope uh that it goes well. Well, do you wanna lend anything to the conversation? Because like I said, I feel good about where we're at. And you know, really hopeful that it gets executed well, but I think construction, you can update that, it's moving right along and and they're doing a bang-up job.
Yeah, so and it is a concern, um but after talking to the contractors in the school, they did assures what they what they plan on doing, because a lot of the concern was, are the children gonna really understand which way to go when you have cones on the construction site? So what they're planning on doing is, right now, they have just gravel which um what, you know, around the the site, and it they'll take a transition from one sidewalk in across the street, but when they when they actually get to the point of pouring, uh they will have what's called candlesticks, which are tall um looking cones with caution tape on both sides uh on the side of the street and the side of the construction site, so the children can go through the cones or the candlesticks and guide them across. There will be uh contractors uh uh around there, as far as school staff also, to kind of help them. Um we believe that also the the first day will probably be the initial kind of, you know, but after that, they'll kind of just understand that is the site. Um they do, like the city manager said, that they'll have extra personnel uh when they pour the actual uh ramps, just to make sure that, you know, nobody is just messes with it while while it dries. It dries fairly quick, um so, but that is the intent. Um once they move out of there, of course, they'll be down on Lincoln, but um they did assure us that they're gonna, they're gonna do the best they can because they do know, and school made it clear just just how uh how many children are out there and and parents dropping off in traffic. So.
Is there a completion date?
Well, they have thirty days to do this, so the idea is to hopefully be done. That area will be less than that, but they, it's a thirty-day project, because the other two are on Lincoln and uh Ninth and then Sixth and and Lincoln. Of course, it's not as heavy traffic over there as this area.
Yeah, I'm I'm on Lincoln and Ninth, you kind of get little hairy, but the other ones should be fine.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you.
Absolutely, thanks. Yep, that all you have, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Hart.
Nothing to contribute to this evening, thank you.
Alright, I have a little bit, I didn't, but I do. Um first of all, um I think Ms. Fernandez asked about contents of a conversation I had with the previous city manager. I cannot think of what conversations we're talking about, so um if you want to meet with me afterwards and enlighten me, because I don't know which conversations you are referring to. Um as mayor, I meet with the city manager, same as every other council person, and try to do so regularly. And I don't have secret conversations with them, so um I don't know which conversations you're talking about. Um in response to the resolutions just passed, um don't have an awful lot to say, other than the fact that I feel somewhat targeted, and uh I don't uh I I don't pass the budget by myself, there were five other people who voted on that, one of whom expressed no confidence in me this evening. The budget is not the mayor's alone, but um you know, gazing upon people who at one time were my friends who are glaring holes through me, I think um perhaps there's been conversations, and um if it is council's desire that I shall no longer be the mayor, then how do you vote? I will accept that vote, but um I don't feel that that's going to improve the situation, and I do not believe that I've been derelict in performing my duties. I only know what I am told and cannot always extrapolate from all the other stuff that's been going on, but if it has seen that I am derelict in duty, then it is council's decision. Alright, moving on, upcoming council meetings. Madam City Clerk.
Okay, our next meeting is September, um I'm sorry, September ninth. Um they hope to have the water system plan public hearing, so the community can come and give comments, and then another presentation, but the same presentation, and then adoption. Um September sixteenth is the fire and police wearing, and I think fire is no longer participating in this one, they're pushing it back to November. And then um depending on if the Public Safety Subcommittee meets, discuss the fireworks ordinance. And also at the September sixteenth meeting, possibly discuss the stormwater rate analysis. And then throughout the rest of the pages, you can see that we start to look into the budget dates, so we'll just be following through with those.
Alright, thank you. And before we go on to the next section, Public Safety does have to meet, I meant to get that brought forth the last time and have not yet done that, so if we can get together real quick and decide a meeting date, or do you have in mind already, does everybody know what your schedule is? Um it's Mr. Beeler and Deputy Mayor and myself.
Let me check my schedule real quick. Were we thinking this week?
We can this week, um if it's, and and we may, I may need to look at my schedule to find out where I am this week, I have quite an odd schedule sometimes, so.
Um available Thursday and Friday morning.
Thursday morning and Friday morning?
I'm available Friday morning.
Friday morning, let's say Friday morning, what time?
Nine AM.
Friday morning at nine AM, we can meet at the City Hall Conference Room, if that's open. Alright, very good. Alright, Mr. City Manager, items for the department heads.
Um uh, why don't I start with Raul, I don't wanna start with with myself, and that would seem rude, but yeah, go ahead, Raul.
Alrighty, well, um I just wanna bring up, uh we've been um emailing back and forth with Deputy Mayor and Maria Lopez on the uh fall cleanup day. Sounds like we have a day scheduled out for September twenty eighth, so um that's coming along. Um sounds like we have staff and most of it lined up. Um also wanted to just uh update you, um August twentieth last week, um the uh the the project for the uh Community Center Gym started with the uh addition of the the plywood for the indoor soccer that we were uh talking about earlier, um as one of the ARPA projects. So that's in in the works. Um and uh that's all I have to bring up.
Uh thank you, uh Cameron.
Um big project is kind of summarized in our weekly report, we are going into our uh what's referred to as GADS reporting, it's a ground ambulance data collection systems, I remembered it. Um so that is a one-time reporting, so any agency that participates in the G M P program is required to participate in that uh data gathering session, it's quite elaborate. Um but we have just started that, and it's kind of been one of those, well, like a Band-Aid, we'll rip it off, we'll get it done, they don't have to worry about it again, but that's a a big project that we've started this week. Um little bit of data, the last couple of weeks since Lance last uh council meeting, we've responded to one hundred and sixty-four emergency incidents, um ninety-six of which resulted in uh transportation to the emergency room.
Thank you, uh Cory.
I have nothing to report to say.
Uh thanks, Chief.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. So the first one is, um there's a low-cost vaccine event on September sixth at ten AM at the Community Center, that's gonna be for pets. And that's gonna be put on with the Animal Control Officer in conjunction with the um Humane Society. And uh the question was asked Saturday about uh tickets from Animal Control. And I apologize, I'm not sure if this includes Sunnyside and Grandview or just Sunnyside, but um this month so far, she's written fifteen tickets with twenty-six charges on those fifteen tickets. And she completed one uh S I R, which is a felony charging document with six class C felonies on that document and one gross misdemeanor. And as far as statistics go, so this is year-to-date, um aggravated assaults are down nine point one percent, burglary, breaking and entering down nine point one. Motor vehicle thefts are down thirteen percent, robberies um are, they're from last year, but they're half of what they were in twenty twenty-two. Um simple assaults are down twenty-eight percent. Uh theft of motor vehicle parts and accessories is down sixty-six percent, and weapons and law violations are down twenty-six percent. Um shots fired calls are down fifteen percent from last year, but they're down seventy percent from where they were at this point in twenty twenty-two. Uh we've handled three hundred and forty-six incidents in the last two weeks, seventy-three traffic stops, twenty-one arrests, twenty-one criminal non-traffic, fourteen criminal traffic, and issued nineteen traffic infractions. Stand for any questions?
Questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief.
Alright, thanks, Chief, some good news there. Uh Ben, anything you wanna add? Okay, thank you. Dennis, anything?
Uh, nothing to report this time.
Okay, thank you. Lucia.
Just a brief uh recruitment and report for the month of August, so in August, we've received to date, sixty-eight applications received for four positions. Uh Community and Economic Development Director, which has moved on to the interview uh phase of the recruitment, which will happen later this week, still accepting applications for a planner, the technology support assistant position, and entry-level police officers. Um in August, we filled a few positions, the recreation coordinator, one entry-level police officer, one firefighter, and one corrections officer. And for uh current and future vacancies, I'm just working closely with our new city manager to determine our direction moving forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lucia, and uh as far as my report goes, uh first of all, I I wanna thank um the folks who I've visited today, I I had a chance to uh start walking around downtown and just visiting with businesses, so um the young lady that you saw doing our translations today, Kim, um you know, she's she's really pushed me to get out there and you know, my Spanish is pretty good, but um hers is pretty amazing, and I lo- I love to see the look on you know, our Latino residents' faces when they see her speaking Spanish, it's it's a, it's a joy to watch, so um but my intent is to create a um Sunnyside Business Advisory Council, and today was really the first step, so I had a chance to meet with uh Luis Garcia um from Johnny Service Center, Dora at Amigo, a cell phone, and also met uh the group from Morris Floral and Gifts and Casey Uber. And then I think my favorite visit was with Doug from the Blue Moon, so he's uh he's a really good guy, so I I promised I would drink a beer with him one in, one of these days in there. So and then shoot a little pool, so uh but you know, I I would say like it was really a good experience, because people were really appreciative that I showed up and you know, so the feeling was genuine, so um you know, I'm gonna hit the streets, uh my goal is a couple times a week and maybe three, just even those five that I hit, you know, it took an hour, you know, to spend some time with people, so I'm making that commitment. Um you know, the the other thing that that we need to do, obviously, there was, it it was a big news that the deficit that we have, but um I talked to staff this morning, keep our heads up, and you know, we're gonna get through it. It's just a bump in the road, I I still believe great things are ahead for Sunnyside. Um the focus is really bringing in an executive level finance director and professional that can really just assist us with dealing with the financial issues that we have, so um I'm grateful, um we've got G M P on board and Dave's able to help us with the process. So I feel good about that and um the direction that we're headed, uh and rest assured, I'm I'm gonna work around the clock to make that happen. Um some other things that I'm working on, um w- working with Y V C O G pretty soon, we're gonna hopefully start master planning, uh my vision is to do something I call um Sunnyside twenty forty-five, more of a twenty-year visioning plan and the Y V C O G has said they can really help us out with that and be a community-focused sort of um twenty-year vision plan. Uh so I'm really excited about that, um soccer master plan, that's another something I'm gonna work on, so you know, the community has spoken, so I'm gonna really get to to work, so there's some big initiatives that we have. Um the one thing I I just wanted to get clarity and direction on from the council was uh the idea of of the marijuana license, we know that that petition is coming forward, we can petition against it, but my take was the will of the council was to let happen whatever will happen with that, don't don't really contest it. It's the will of the people, um workshop it, you know, in the public with, you know, inviting the public to weigh in on how they feel. Then ultimately, maybe next February, bring it to the ballot, either as an initiative or um sort of a direction for us, so So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, you know, re- incorrectly reading between the lines, but that was, and I'll, I'll bring Ben into this, just to make sure that compliance-wise, right, this is when we, you get paid the big money. Um, because if we don't do anything, essentially it moves forward. We can message this. We did this in Pasco where we sort of, we knew it was on the floor. We went out to the community. We had, gosh, I bet you four or five workshops, people weighed in on all sides and then ultimately the council in that case made a decision and did not do an advisory vote. Um, they made the decision to actually pass it, but I mean, I think the will of this council is to give it to the voters, see what they want. Um, so anyhow, that's kind of how I'll lay it out there for you, Ben, as far as, I guess my question really is if we do nothing and proceed with that, we're, we're in the same place we kind of are now, right? Okay, that was a long way, a long question there, but.
See, that's absolutely one, uh, for able to, uh, if we want. Typically, the only time the city can do that is if the municipal change and already this, this incident, this has to be on what the city is in. Uh, the city doesn't allow in the first place. There is nothing to object to at this point because it's going to remain the same parameters. So the city can do a symbolic objection if they wanted to this, but it would have all kinds of licenses. So it's up to you that you want to do. Our understanding was that you didn't want that any point on, as far as the city's action on a particular or random if you wanted to put that about it for February, you can. There's no parameters other than just having that signature for you settled.
Okay, so it sounds like the first step is, is those community forums and, you know, um, open it up for discussion in the community and, and kind of take it from there. Okay, perfect. So that's, that's all I had and, um, let me just check one thing that I might have wanted to bring up is, uh, was excited to get Planning Commission going again and, and as, as Lucia mentioned, I'm really excited about uh, the recruitment of the Economic Development Director. So that's, I think that's really going to set us in the right direction and, and, uh, we've got some good candidates on the table, so I'm looking forward to speaking with them.
All right, at all?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody, for your report. I did forget to say that on upcoming council meetings, please remember to get the, uh, any agenda items you'd like to add to the agenda um, uh, to the manager or the clerk by the Wednesday before the meeting. Um, it's not customary to drop them into the middle of the meeting, so let's try to get those on the agenda. And if there's no further business to come before council, Ms. Vasquez.
You skipped over Jacqueline.
Oh, yeah.
Jacqueline. Okay.
My apologies. Thank you. Thank you for that.
That's true. I always give a.
Just going to say that the due date has been switched to the Monday before the meeting, so it gives us a lot more time to get it to you by Thursday morning, but things always come up, I understand. But if we could get it earlier, it'll allow for less errors and just better process. Um, so now that I'm giving you an update, I guess, I just want to share just the graphics that we're sharing on social media and, um, every week for that sixteenth project for pedestrian improvements, you'll see we get an update. And I'll just create this graphic and I'll just update this wording. And then I also wanted to share, since we have a lot of people in the room, I just want to remind citizens, um, that we have a newsflash section and we always have where we put just important topics that are coming up. And this is the newsflash section. Up top here, it says notify me. You can sign up to get notifications whenever anything is published here. Um, and if you would like to stay connected with us, please do so right here. And that is it for me.
All right, thank you.
Before you.
Ms. Hart.
I do have something. I decided to do have something to say. One, I heard that. Thank you very much. So it's nice to be talking.
Ms. Hart, please.
I know. Thank you. One of the great things that happened on Saturday, uh, was the fact that, uh, the Tina Noth soccer field, there were three fields set up on that, on that field. And I don't know if the rest of the council noticed it or not on their, on their hurry to get to the Law and Justice Center. But there were a bunch of kids out there. There were, this, the nets were all out there and there are all kinds of different sizes, like, like a whole bunch of puppies out there running around. And, uh, so it was very good and, and it was just, I was just thinking about my friend Tina Noth and how we came about moving that after her. She was actually in boxing. She trained boxers, young people as boxers, like uh, the Ramones, uh, the Ramos family does. I think it's right, Cruz. Is it Cruz? Ramos Cruz and Sarah Cruz and I can't remember Mrs. Cruz's name. Call her that. Anyway, uh, so, but to see all those kids playing soccer is really good. And I really appreciate the work that's already got those fields going. The other thing is, I would just like to comment on the fact that I'm really against this resolution expressing a vote of no confidence in our mayor Dean Boisman. And because the man has done, he's been on the council. He is, is a man of integrity. He is a man who takes this job very, very seriously. As he said, he wasn't the only one who voted on the, on the budget for twenty twenty twenty-four. Um, so to, to, to throw him under the bus as was done this evening, I think is a miscarriage of justice in my mind. I think that there are several council members at this table that probably should remember that they were the ones who said that let's just give it to the new council to figure out. And I noticed that there were a couple of former council members in the audience earlier this evening who were also on the, let's just give it to the new kids to do. So it's not just a matter of one person.
Please do not comment. This is not public comment time.
Well, it is my floor. It is my turn to speak and I am speaking.
Please, Mr. Kennard. Public comment. Ms. Hart, please direct your comments to the chair.
At this point, I just would like to say that I just really object to this. I think it's, I think it's in bad faith all around. Everybody that you might want to pick on for being negligent, uh, weren't re-elected. So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. There being no further business to come before this council and without objection, adjourn this meeting at eight forty-seven PM.